Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October seventeenth meeting of our Board of Commissioners. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise, pray, pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now time for public comment. Does anyone have any comment they would like to make? Not. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our October third meeting.
Take the motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved. Morning, Mrs. Nguyen.
Seats on October the fifteenth and sixteenth are thirty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Brings us to total cash at one million eight hundred thousand one hundred eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. We had expenditures at one million one hundred and twenty thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Our tax claim is eleven thousand four fifty-one thirty-eight. Leaves us a balance of six hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved. Thank you. Morning.
Chelsea Navy, Director of Community Resources. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations. Jay Arenas, Aging Care Manager Two, Area Agency on Aging, resignation effective October sixteenth. Andrew Keith Smith, Casework Supervisor One, Children and Youth, termination effective October second. Sergio Bruno Junior, Caseworker Two, Children and Youth, resignation effective October eleventh. Lucas McQuain, Private First Class, from the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, resignation effective October twenty-fourth. Sarah Santiago, Operations Tech, Coroner, Department of Emergency Services, termination effective October second. Terry Smith, Admin Assistant Two, Domestic Relations, resignation effective November eighth. Lillian Martinez Mitchell, Office Support Two, Domestic Relations, resignation effective the last working day of October third. Heather Stanberry, Full-Time Direct Care Aid from Renova, termination effective October seventh.
Motion. Motion to approve those resignations and terminations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Under Changes of Status, Transfers, and Promotions. Kelly Hamilton, Promotion from Caseworker Two in Children and Youth to Child Abuse Investigator in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-seventh. Corby Evans, Promotion from Office Support Two in Children and Youth to Fiscal Assistant in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-eighth. Tyler Griff, Promotion from Telecommunicator One in Department of Emergency Services to Telecommunicator Two at the rate of twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour, effective October thirteenth.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
For other transactions, Children and Youth would like to hire Angela Grace DeAngelo as an Office Support Two at the rate of one thousand two hundred and six dollars and eighty-seven cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-eighth. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following two casual part-time correctional officers, both at the rate of twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents per hour, both effective October twenty-ninth, and that is Jaden Missimer and Samuel Ritchie. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following two full-time correctional officers at the rate of twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents per hour, both effective October twenty-eighth, and that is Timothy Shoemaker and Anna Lee Sendog. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Stanley Fennigle as an Operations Tech for the Coroner's Office at the rate of thirteen dollars and five cents per hour, effective October twenty-first. M H I D E I would like to rehire Angela Spangler as a Caseworker Two at the rate of one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-first. And Pathonatary Clerk of Courts would like to hire Nancy McCorkle as a part-time Court Clerk at the rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents per hour, effective October twenty-first.
Motion to approve those resolutions, action.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following. We have a change in start date for Edward Burns, Detective, and the Detectives Bureau. The start date will be effective October twenty-first now. And Benjamin Polcinski, Salary Increase System Administrator in Department of Emergency Services to rate three thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-seventh. And Priana LaLiberte as a Salary Increase Planning Officer in Department of Emergency Services to the rate of two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents bi-weekly, effective October twenty-seventh.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those Salary Board transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Morning.
Good morning, Audrey. Would you like to introduce yourself? Proceed.
Audrey Fortna, Director of Lebanon County Probation Services. Good morning. I am here to present two grant applications to you. I will start with the juvenile grant aid application for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The amount offered by J C J C this year matches what was offered last year, and that is one hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. We are able to utilize up to ten percent of that for operational costs. We have denoted approximately seven point eight percent this year to be utilized in that manner. The rest will be used to offset personnel costs. Any unspent operational costs can be moved at the end of the fiscal year toward personnel costs. I have left the signature page at the front desk. If you approve, I respectfully ask for your support.
This motion. Take the motion to approve that application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this motion? Yes.
What, I mean, what exactly grant, juvenile grant and aid, what does that, what does that do? What do you use that for?
So at least ninety percent is for personnel costs. It's to help support the personnel cost of the juvenile unit. We are able to use up to ten percent for operational costs. What we're utilizing it for this year is to help offset like communication costs for our cell phones, for the officers, training costs for the officers. For needs-based budget, you have to build that out. Or any new programming has to be filled out two years in advance, so this for small programs is a nice stepping stone. So two years ago, for instance, we utilized it to start the fishing program, our juvenile fishing program, which is now covered by needs-based. A couple of years ago, our community treatment center had a garden when they were located out on Grace Avenue. And when they relocated, they didn't have the room, so we're going to try to start on a smaller scale, a garden at our office. So there are funds built into this, at least for the next two years, to get that up and running, for those types of things.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
A little bit about small space gardens, trying techniques on the square foot gardens. You can be very successful in a very small space.
Thank you.
Nothing else, anything? Let's see, nothing. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Okay, then we will move on.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Seven. Sorry. Support.
Yes.
Thank you.
Continuing County Probation and Parole Grant for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five. This is for the adult unit. P C C D has implemented the new funding formula, which they've been working on for the past few years. And as a result, our amount has increased a step. We are now receiving ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars this year. I'm hopeful that that will continue to increase. This will be utilized for personnel costs, and there is no match required. It is my understanding that Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Coon are working on the new signature requirements. Thank you very much. We haven't, we haven't gone that route with the juvenile grant aid yet, but I have a feeling that's not far off.
We're getting there.
Okay. This grant is due October thirty-first. I can submit it without the signatures. They just won't process it until we have. I respectfully ask for your support.
Motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the County Probation Parole Grant for ninety-seven thousand seven eleven.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, there he is.
Morning.
Good morning.
To get situated, you may introduce yourself and then proceed.
Thank you. My name's Dan Lyons. I'm the Program Director for the County's Redevelopment Authority. I have a few pieces of business for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the end of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four cycle. We will be applying the county's entitlement allocation on November first. And leading up to this point, we've accepted funding requests from Lebanon County municipalities and public health agencies. This year, all eligible applications were able to be funded in whole, and that was the recommendations we made. We advertised that budget in the newspaper and held a public hearing yesterday. And so the first piece of business would be to dump this application resolution, which authorizes the submission of the application to the Department of Community and Economic Development in accordance with the budget that was advertised.
Second.
There we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Daniel? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Thank you. The second item is the Fair Housing Resolution. This is a required component of the C D B G application, but it's a standalone resolution that commits the county to comply with the Fair Housing Act. This is part of the application every year.
Make a motion to approve Fair Housing Resolutions.
Second. Motion is made and a second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same sign, so moved.
Thank you. I also have a resolution to approve modifications to older C D B G fiscal years, two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-three. This is mostly just moving funding around. We did have one public service provider who relinquished their allocation. They were proposing to be split to the other two eligible public service providers. We had a project in South Lebanon Township that came in under budget. We'd like, the South Lebanon would like to use the excess money for a housing rehab program. This too was spelled out in an advertisement. It was in the newspaper. We held a public hearing on it yesterday. So I would like permission to submit that, those budget modifications to the state, please.
I think the motion authorizes permission to authorize those modification requests.
Second.
A second motion. I do have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
On the summary for the four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and three dollars, there's a page. I don't know that there's a page number on it, but it's, it's, I am closer to the back. It has down that, and I did read it somewhere in the body, that both London Family Health Services and Volunteers in Medicine will be getting increases of like ten thousand dollars or twelve thousand dollars. Yeah. Was that something they requested, or did we just do it out of the goodness of our heart, or?
This is based on our recommendation. So this is the oldest open fiscal year for C D B G money. And Midten Legal Services had an award. They had an allocation of C D B G.
And to redistribute.
And they, yeah, they're unable to spend it. And we have only, we have mere months until that contract expires. So the recommendation is to take their allocation and divide it equally between the other two public service providers that are funded in that fiscal year, because they can spend the money before our contract expires. And with only a few months left, there's really no other activity that we can do that would be completed.
I guess the follow-up question to get to it, I had to get to go through the first part. Is that guaranteed then in successive years? Did, did they, they didn't cut themselves out completely?
No, mid-ten?
Yeah.
No, they're welcome to apply for funding every year. They, unfortunately, this is the second year that they have failed to spend their grant, so we did this last year. Yeah, they had a, an award in fiscal year twenty-nineteen, came down to the wire, they couldn't get it spent. So we had to turn it over to the other agencies, but they are welcome. They're, you know, they may apply every year.
Okay. I, I just couldn't remember, and I'll give a guess.
Yesterday.
Is, is this motion just on the twenty-twenty modification or the twenty-twenty and the twenty-twenty-one?
It's actually all four fiscal years in one resolution, twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
A little bit of movement in each one of those four years.
Okay. On the twenty-twenty-one.
Yes.
So the South, the South Lebanon Township.
Yes.
The twenty-five thousand's going to housing rehab. Have they identified somewhere, or is this an application process, or how are they going about that?
This is a existing owner-occupied housing rehab, and they have identified three residents of the township who they think can use this funding. One of them is already on our list to receive assistance through the Whole Home Repairs Program, so we know they're eligible, and they've been waiting in line. We're in the process of qualifying those property owners.
Okay.
But the township came to us with three names.
Okay. And are those, if I recall correctly, the eligible area in South Lebanon is the Avon Heights area?
Well, actually with.
Or can it be anywhere in the town?
You're correct that that's the, the township's designated low-income area. But with the existing owner-occupied housing rehab, we qualify the individual property owner. They can be located wherever in the township.
Okay.
As long as they meet the income qualification.
Okay, and similar question then for Mill Creek Township. Process there.
Yes. This is brand-new for Mill Creek Township. There's one person that the township supervisor had in mind, that they're referring to our office. But anyone in the town, in Mill Creek Township is welcome to apply. There's no waiting list at the moment. If you're first come, first served. The, one of the supervisors had somebody in mind. They haven't gotten in touch with our office yet, but they're just, they're looking to help whomever they can.
So is there a public process other than a supervisor referring someone?
There can be. There's not one mandated. So this will be, this is, you know, advertised publicly and discussed and voted on at their supervisor's meeting. They can choose to do advertisement for that program specifically. But they haven't directed us to do that beyond what was made public during the certification process.
That's up to them? That's up to the township, how much they publicize or how much they put out there?
We take direction from the township and from the county. They don't have a lot of money in that program.
Yeah. Well, sixty-five thousand, it looks like, right?
Yeah, which could be.
So how does South Lebanon do it in terms of, I mean, they, from what I heard, they have applicants who have been in the process.
They had.
You have some already identified people on a waiting list.
That's right.
More money comes along, you know, naturally you go to that list.
Yeah, and, and with, with South, so the, we administer the county-wide Whole Home Repairs Program, which helps county and any municipality. And there were two South Lebanon Township residents already on that list.
Right.
So we started there, and then the township has other people that they become aware of, you know, people that reach out to them or they become aware for one reason or another. These two, like, if they weren't, in the case of South Lebanon Township, if they weren't up against this contract deadline, they may not have gone, they may not have funded their housing rehab program because of the county-wide Whole Home Rehab Program.
And Mill Creek has not had a program prior.
Correct.
So you have a referral, and then, but then the referral has to apply.
Correct.
You've not received an application yet.
Oh, so correct.
So what, so, and you only have months?
Not in the case of Mill Creek. Their, their program will be funded out of the fiscal year twenty-three, so they have three years yet to spend that money.
But it's up to the township on whether or not they want to advertise.
It's first come, first served, but it's up to, you know, if they, it, it has been advertised. But if they want to do marketing or.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
We good? Jamie. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, so moved.
Thank you. And then the final resolution is for an updated citizen participation plan. This is a, a plan, one of several, that the Community Development Block Grant Program requires us to have, making minor updates to it. The state puts out a template every so often with what they think should be in the plan. This one specifically adds Mill Creek Township to the plan. It allows us to do hybrid public hearings, so we will all, we will continue to have public hearings in person, but this allows us to have a Zoom option in addition to that if desired. And it does have some emergency stipulations if there's another disaster declaration that would allow for flexibility with the required lead time to having public hearings and so forth.
Make a motion to approve the updated citizen participation plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Anyway, we'll get those signed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on. Let me do this first, if you don't mind.
He's going to say it in more. Well, we're very happy to insert this into our agenda. It's a loss for the county, but quality of life stands before you. And we have a proclamation for Mr. Ott for his service to the county.
Whereas Michael L. Ott began his career with the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, employed as a part-time correctional officer on December fifteenth, nineteen ninety-six, and later became a full-time officer on January twelfth, nineteen ninety-seven. Whereas on March twelfth, two thousand six, he was promoted to Training Officer, and on May fourth, two thousand eight, was promoted to Captain and was the prison SERC leader. Whereas Mike received a promotion to the position of Deputy Warden of Operations on February eleventh, twenty nineteen, and later transferred to the Department of Emergency Services as Hazmat Chief on January eighth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas during his tenure, Mike served the county with devotion and commitment, performing his duties and responsibilities in professional manner. Skills and leadership have been appreciated by the county. He has been a valuable and dedicated employee. Whereas on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, Mike will retire from the Department of Emergency Services with over twenty-seven years of distinguished service. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past boards of county commissioners, past imprisoned employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Mike for the outstanding service he provided during his many years at the Correctional Facility and the Department of Emergency Services. Further extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and very best retirement.
Yeah, appreciate it. So a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Motion to approve. Thanks very much.
Second, the motion with great appreciation for your service.
Thank you. And seconded, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs, so moved. Congratulations. And do you have anything you'd like to add, or Mr. Dowd?
I'd just like to add that we are glad that we got to have you for almost two years. Plus, and your career is impressive. That's a lot.
Thank you.
Don't forget to come back and say hi.
It's like Jerry Garcia said, what a long, strange trip it's been. Nineteen ninety-six, I just was looking for a job with stability and some benefits, and I was fortunate to have that. I worked under a lot of great individuals that helped me get to this position. Made a lot of great friends and contacts at the prison and had a lot of great years there, and that molded and shaped me. Brings out a lot of your strengths and weaknesses, but I was very fortunate. And then to get an opportunity to work at D E S, just a bunch of great individuals, and it's a real, real blessing to be involved in two organizations within the public service field, at the prison and at D E S. The county has something to be very proud of, and we have a lot of great individuals at those two places, so just happy to be a part of it.
Well, thank you. And both the jail and the D E S are better for having had you in their midst, and they have a nice cheering section back there of your fellow.
Make sure it gets out.
Or they're to escort you.
Yeah, there, there was no sense of, yeah, they were just.
Would you like to receive it?
Unfortunately, you have to smile more time. I want to take the worship. How he gets it all done. Everywhere I go, people, you know, they're always calling, hey, how many times have you heard Lebanon County people say, get off?
Mike was rehearsing that this morning, so very good, Mike.
Good morning.
Yeah, I thought, whoa, it's early for jokes.
All right, Jamie.
Exemption requests for disabled veterans eligible for real estate tax exemption. They are Kenneth Four of Woods Lane, Palmyra, Terrence Rule, Garden Avenue, Lebanon, Frank Biere III of Wirthsworth Street, Lebanon, Holden Says Darrows, Mayflower Drive, Jonestown, Adrian Rodriguez, West Main Street, Anvil, and Adrian Khan of McGillstown Road, Anvil.
Make a motion to approve the disabled veteran exemption request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I, just as an update, I believe this puts us in the over five hundred properties that have been exempted due to veterans being totally disabled, so we're proud that the rest of our taxpayers are subsidizing these and proud to do it on behalf of these veterans. Any questions?
Is that all at one time, or is that over the course of?
In one time, no, we're just doing these.
I'm sorry.
We're just doing these today. Yes, that's, that's.
Yes, cumulative number. Some, some may have dropped, I think, if they're, they're six or anything, they drop off.
That's right. I wondered if it was all that we approved, or if that's the current number.
That's an actual number.
That's an active number.
Yeah, that's an active one. Yep. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Maybe that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would adjourn our meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Did we do this one from a district attorney? It was on my desk this morning.
No, that's a request. That's just a personnel request.
Okay, so we didn't have to vote on that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. Meaning not today.
Not, okay, so it's not on today's agenda?
Correct.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, so we will. For motion.
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned, and now I will pass the gavel to our chairman of assessment board.
Hello, Dan. Welcome. Call the meeting to order. If you would like to proceed, I know there's just one exemption request, is that correct?
Right, right.
This is an exemption request. We had heard the appeal back over October third. And they submitted some extra information since then, and Matt got to look over it, our solicitor. And it is, the appeal number is two oh two five dash D dash ten. And it is property at ten seventy-eight Gravel Hill Road, Grantville, PA. And it is Keystone Service Systems. And they were asking for exemption on Susquehanna Service Dogs facility that they have at that property. Just pass it to Matt here to give his recommendation.
Yeah, I I had a chance to review the application and the letter that was submitted by counsel. Included in your packet, I have a memorandum in which I recommend the exemption request be granted.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll make a vote to approve that exemption request. Let's take a new motion.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Beginning of the Lebanon County Board of Elections to order. And with any public comment? Done. We approve the minutes submitted from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Not all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Miss Havitz, thank you, and we can move on. I mean, maybe introduce yourselves for record and proceed with any updates you have.
Chuck Rasher, for the elections.
Joyce Scarborough, deputy adjourned to the elections.
We have a general update for you. If you've noticed, it's quite busy. First of all, LNA went off successfully, no hitches, it went quickly, and we're very pleased with the results. So that's all filed away. We'll be attesting to the final results for LNA, which means just showing that we did all the work we were supposed to as of today, so it'll be submitted. Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to provide just a brief legal update, but I don't have a key moderate to you.
Nope, you can go right ahead. I'll jump in after.
Okay.
Just, man, yes, LNA, would you mind?
I'm so sorry. You do that every time. Logic and accuracy test.
Good morning, Matt Beasley, County Solicitor. I did want to provide the board with a very brief update with regard to where we stand on lawsuits that were being filed throughout September and October pertaining to mail-in ballots. There, as you may recall over the past several years, there's been a lot of movement in the courts, both the state courts and the federal courts pertaining to whether ballots which are missing a signature or a date should still nonetheless be counted. In September, Lebanon County, along with the other sixty-six county boards, were named as a respondent in cases that were filed with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. These cases were essentially to seek clarification from the Supreme Court and to seek a determination of whether or not these ballots nonetheless should be counted if they are missing a date or a signature. This, these actions were called King's Bench petitions. You're essentially asking the Supreme Court to take up a case from its inception. In both cases, at the beginning of October, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court denied the King's Bench petitions. They essentially said that they will not be changing the the rules and the laws pertaining to an election during the pendency of an election, and since voting had already been. So where the law stands right now is that undated mail-in ballots are not to be counted. Additionally, mail-in ballots that don't contain a signature are not to be counted as well. And in the orders that came down from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, they indicated that they would not be making any any changes between now and and Election Day regarding how counties count and process the votes. So I did want to just provide that very brief update. I've been working closely with Sean. We've been advertising several several items, including public inspection of the machines, which will be next week. We will be convening, obviously, for our pre-canvas at seven o'clock on Election Day, November fifth. And also, too, I did want to note, because it may become pertinent this year, the recount provisions. If if there is a, if if the total between candidates for either president, US Senate, or any of the statewide races is less than one half of one percent, then the Secretary of the Commonwealth will order a recount of all sixty-seven county boards of election. And so I've begun to look into that process to make sure that we are ready to go if that occurs. And so I just wanted to make the board aware that we are moving in that direction, just making sure all of our all of our i's are dotted, t's are crossed in anticipation for the election.
So the, in the event that an automatic recount is triggered, it would come in under half of one percent. There, we would not be doing a full election recount. We'd be focusing in on the one race. And that is something we can do from a technical point of view to make it a lot easier, faster to do so. So it would be the first time we've done this. We'll we'll have, hopefully, plenty of time to turn that around once they announce it. It wouldn't be a next day thing. In it, so as you can see, it is very busy out there. We've added additional workstations in the office. We have more to add. We've run out of space to add more people, like just physical space to set up more computers at this point. We've added another phone line. We've doubled up on all of our extra temporary help, and we would be, we have people ready to go for even more, except we just don't have space to put them right now. So I think, though, with the space that we have, we're doing a pretty good job. System limitations that are outside of our county keep things from going too fast, unfortunately, in a number of ways, and other counties have been impacted in a bigger way than we are between the parties doing voter registration drives locally and simple database limitations. There are counties around the area that are reporting three- to four-hour waits for same-day voting, and we're doing about fifteen to twenty minutes. So I'm pretty happy with where we are right now. In in addition to doubling up on our temp workers, our poll worker count currently is at one hundred percent, fully staffed and ready to go. As fast as we have someone get sick or have to drop out, we have two people waiting to replace them, so we're doing well with that. Canvassers, we're at one hundred and thirty percent of where we wanted to be, which brings up one possible question that we'll be exploring in the next week. We have enough people, we could expand our footprint if we can find a place to put people to process the ballots on Election Day. So I'm not exactly sure how to accommodate that, but we're we have the staff rather than turn them away. We could use any space we want. There's, other counties that have double or triple our number of voters don't necessarily have everyone canvassing in one room. They will spread them out across multiple rooms or sites to do so. So we've never had to do that before, but I'm thinking with the volume that we're going to have this time, I'd rather bring in the extra people since they're available, find more space for them. I can talk one-on-one with you guys about that offline. For the booth, we have a hundred percent coverage of the booth, and we've also doubled up. I know, Joel, there was something you had discussed letting the spring. We're doubling up on workers there to keep things moving and just for another layer of security, and because we just have such a waiting list of people that want to help, so I'm comfortable with that. And finally, the raw numbers. Please accept my apologies for not dropping using your box sooner. They're changing so quickly that as fast as we generate them, they're off by a considerable number. So as of this morning, your raw numbers are, you had fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six actual ballots sent. That number will go up considerably by the end of this week. And you have six thousand fifty-one that are returned and recorded. That's a pretty good percentage. We're way ahead of where we normally are in this part of the election cycle. And I'll give you, I will leave hard copies of this, but just know it'll be outdated by the end of the day tonight. You have twenty-four hundred twenty-one Republican returned and three thousand ten Democrat. So the Republican return rate's at about thirty-nine percent this morning, and the Democrats at forty-four percent. Overall, for the county, it works out right about in the middle of forty-one percent. I have one other number I think is, unless you have. The number that I'm very excited about is we currently, as of this morning, have ninety-four thousand seven hundred and sixteen registered voters. And there's no reason to believe we won't be at ninety-five thousand by the end of the week.
I just, while we have the benefit of the press here, would you mind just, you mentioned the the drive, if you could, we'll go through the dates and the process for that, and also early voting, there's still some confusion with people. They think they can vote anywhere, but they can only vote here, just to clarify those things, and what they must bring or show up with in order to do it here, and just get clarification on some of those.
In no particular order, the shed is the the outdoor drop-off point is open and available since the seventh. It is staffed four, eight-thirty to four-thirty. And doubly staffed, eight-thirty to four-thirty.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. And it is doing robust business out there, but they're moving people very quickly. If they want, if voters want anything done besides dropping off their ballot, they'll have to come into the office. And there are some lines right now, but it's not constantly. We do some well. To vote in person's a little confusing. In the state of Pennsylvania, there is no early voting per se, like in other states, so to vote early, what we do is we have people come in, fill out a mail-in ballot application, which I know bothers some people, I understand that. And then we hand them their ballot on the spot, and they are able to write their vote at one of the privacy areas out here, and we collect it immediately.
And what you said bothers some, I've overheard in the hallway where they're they don't want to fill out a mail-in because they're here, but it is, it is one of the same application.
It is. To vote early, you have to fill out a mail-in ballot.
And they could do that up until when?
They can do that up until the twenty-ninth of October.
Question?
Could you identify yourself for the right?
So what prevents that person then from not going on the polling?
So everything is trapped immediately. So any, when someone votes early or votes by mail, it flags their record so that when they go on Election Day, that they're already flagged. Someone, it's not unusual on Election Day for people to come in and say, but I didn't really vote. Or or I sent my ballot in and it wasn't recorded, or something like that. And in that case, they would be directed, it's still marked, but they would be directed to vote provisionally, and then we would investigate post-election to make sure.
So you don't run, I don't know that you run books anymore, because now it's on an iPad, so you don't run those numbers that flags them until after the twenty-ninth? Is that?
Correct. Correct, right up to right after that.
I just wanted to make sure that I kept you informed. I don't want to hide anything. Through my caucus at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, I've been involved in filing papers, and I try to keep Sean informed, but I'm not allowed to correspond necessarily if something would come to a vote, so it's kind of sketchy. But anyhow, there are two that are still active in the courts. And make sure that you are aware of that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand any of that.
It it goes to our, you know, must it be dated, must it be signed, those kinds of things. So.
You signed on to a support.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Lutz had signed on to an amicus brief, which doesn't necessarily mean it's that you're a party to the lawsuit. It just, her along with other county commissioners signed on, advocating for the court to take the position one way or the other.
But I just didn't want it to be a surprise if anything would come of it.
So this is the issue that you said that will not be debated any further by the courts?
Yeah, it looks like the cases that, in which Commissioner Lutz had signed on to the amicus briefs, there will likely not be a resolution in those cases before the election. Those cases will will make their way through the court system in their natural form. And and as we received indication from the Supreme Court, they are not, they have indicated to the counties that they do not want to change any any rules, regulations at this point, now that we are now three weeks, less than three weeks from Election Day. The other point I did want to mention, too, because I realize a lot of people only vote every four years and they only vote in November. The ballots this time around have to physically be in our possession by eight PM on Election Night. The only exception is military and overseas ballots. As you may recall, last last presidential election, there was a ruling from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court that allowed the counties to accept the ballots up until Friday as long as they were postmarked for Election Day. That is not the case this year, so it is imperative, just sort of as a public service announcement, that that people know that they have to physically be here by eight PM to be counted.
Which is why, a big reason why we have to shut outside, to make it easy, so people are, if it's the last day, you don't even have to come in the building. We're going to get that ballot in. So I have.
Anything else for the go of the order? And this is one of the challenges as there aren't elections, missionaries, that there's possibility of continuing lawsuits and in courts, sometimes intervening, and it's clear to me in constitutional states, that should be a legislative process, judicial, so. Anyway, we'll have to wait till the election works itself out and a lot of our positions as may be necessary, but anyway, right now, we aren't counting any undated or unsigned ballots, so that should be a notice to the public to make sure they do that.
But it could change if the courts rule.
That's what I said.
So I think Matt and I have repeated a high system. As Matt and I have said over and over again, we are following the law. It's like we're not expanding the law, we're not, we're just following the law.
It is, the law has continued to change.
Yeah.
As interpreted by.
Yes.
That shouldn't happen anymore.
Yeah, we take here a holding pattern post-election.
Yes. So the change that we experienced the last time almost constantly is is pretty well ceased.
Yeah.
At least for this election.
Right.
Anything else for the go of the order? Not one intended motion, no adjourn.
Second.
Turn, thank you. Good luck.